Good evening, everyone. I'll call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for August 27, 2018. Call upon Councilmember David Jones.
Thank you, Your Honor. If you'd join me for a moment of silent reflection. And if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Kristin Rush, if you'll do roll.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Proton Mariott.
Here.
Councilmember Viper.
Present.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember McGough.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Okay, all present and accounted for. Next, we have public comment. And if you wish to speak on the issue of the resolution regarding the ballot question, I am going to allow public comment during that portion. So if you have comments pertaining to that, why don't you hold them until we get to Item 5B, the resolution. But if you've got other public comments you would like to make at this time, please feel free to come down and make it. Seeing that, I'll close that public comment portion and then open it up for the consent agenda item under new business. And we'll indicate that we have one item on the consent agenda, 2018-417, R-18090, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a purchase order in the amount of $745,180 to Larry H. Miller Ford for the purchase of 19, 2019 Ford Police Interceptor utility vehicles. Mr. Devon? Do you want to give a little explanation as to why we're buying 19
Yes, I do.
Police vehicles at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The reason why we're buying 19 police vehicles at this time is that the next iteration of the Ford Police Interceptor is going through an upgrade or a change. And whenever a vehicle, a police interceptor vehicle goes through an upgrade or a change along those lines, it requires us to, in a sense, reinvent how we wire the vehicles for the mobile data terminals, the radios, the communications equipment, and all those kinds of things. By getting out ahead and getting an order in at this time, we are able to keep our template for how we wire the vehicles for communications and data and so forth. It also gives us a head start. These vehicles take quite a bit of time. There's quite a bit of lead time involved in getting these vehicles procured. And then, once we get them procured, getting them all wired and ready to go for service. So by doing this purchase right now, we are able to guarantee, or as close to guarantee as we can, have these vehicles ready when the other vehicles or other police interceptors reach the end of their useful life. In addition, some of this 19 number represents new police vehicles that we need in order to sustain our fleet of police vehicles and have enough police vehicles for all of our officers to use that need to be deployed. This also includes both marked vehicles and also unmarked vehicles for our police department. Part of this expansion is necessary for the future operation of the Delta Station.
Very good. Yeah, I thought it'd be important to give that explanation. Ms. Ford?
I'd like to make a motion if there are no questions.
You may.
I move that consent item, R-18-090, be approved.
Motion's for approval of the consent agenda item. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next, we'll hear about Resolution 18, 2018-400, R-18091, a resolution submitting a ballot question to the electors of the city regarding the issuance of City of Arvada bonds in an amount of $79.8 million with a repayment cost of up to $125 million with no increase in taxes. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to provide some background information. And then, we have Mr. William Ray, who will be making an additional presentation to you regarding some information regarding the ballot question. What I wanted to bring to the council's attention is the road that was traveled to get to this point. You may recall, council may recall, that we discussed these projects, or capital projects in general, during the January council retreat. And at that time, you made it very clear that you wanted us to consider some large projects as we were on the verge of paying off the bonds that were issued in 2018. Those are, I'm sorry, 1998. Those bonds would be paid off this year, 2018. And you wanted us to consider some, you know, two or three large projects that would make a significant impact on the community. So we took that direction to heart. In addition to that, you also want us to do some analysis around the conditions of borrowing the money, you know, issuing bonds versus pay-as-you-go. So we did that analysis for you. In fact, we returned on April the 9th with the analysis of issuing bonds versus pay-as-you-go. And the conclusion was that when you factor in inflation and the time delay and other factors along those lines, it made more sense to issue bonds for large projects, particularly transportation projects, than it would necessarily to do pay-as-you-go. The next thing you directed us to do was to come back in May with some potential projects. So we provided you a menu of projects in May, and you looked at all of those projects, and you really focused on transportation projects that you felt would have a big impact on the community. And kind of rising to the top for those projects was the widening of Ralston Road between Yukon and Garrison. And then also the adding of additional travel lanes on West 72nd Avenue, and then the grade separation tunnel at West 72nd Avenue and the railroad tracks. And at that time, we were looking at the segment between Kipling and Oak. So you asked us to, you know, provide you with more information on those projects. We returned in July with more information about those projects. At the first meeting in July, you asked us to provide you with an estimate for actually extending the West 72nd Avenue project to Sims. And so we provided you with that additional information. And it was through that process of iteration and discussion and more iteration and more discussion that we identified the projects that are before you tonight, which is the widening and pedestrian improvements for Ralston Road between Yukon and Garrison, and then the additional travel lane in each direction, and the grade separation on West 72nd Avenue from Kipling all the way west to Sims. Both projects were cited by the 2015 Citizens Capital Improvement Project Committee. In fact, Ralston Road was actually cited as a top project by two different Citizens Capital Improvement Project Committees. West 72nd Avenue was identified as something that we should study in the recommendations from the 2015 Citizens Capital Improvement Project Committee process. Council may recall that you decided not to accept the recommendation to study it unless we were going to actually go forward with the project. And the, both projects will really focus on improvement of pedestrian and driver safety. Both projects also enhance pedestrian, I'm sorry, alleviate traffic congestion as part of what will occur. And with respect to the West 72nd Avenue project, we will have a situation where we will need to work with property owners that are located on the north side of West 72nd Avenue, west of Kipling, in order to acquire some properties there. We have had meetings with those property owners in order to discuss the impacts of the project. They have been kept informed about the, you know, the council's current consideration. And in the course of having those discussions with the property owners, we will be utilizing the Federal Act for property acquisition, which means that we will be working with them on negotiating a fair price for their property. In cases where we have done that, you know, we pay for an appraisal to be done by an appraiser that the property owner selects. We also selected an appraisal and do, and appraise the property. And then, if there's a difference between the two appraisals, then we work together through the process of negotiating to get to a fair price. It has been our custom to go over in meeting the fair price and actually reaching a price that's more close to what the property owner's appraisal has factored in than what the appraisal that we've contracted for. So that, part of this process is to make sure we treat everyone fairly in the course of making these decisions. Before you tonight is the resolution that would place the measure on the ballot. Staff recommends the approval of the resolution. And prior to your actual decision, we have a presentation from Mr. Ray that will provide you with a little bit more background in terms of the community research and engagement that we've done to bring this decision to this point. Mr. Ray?
Good evening, council members. I'm William Ray, owner of WR Communications. We're a business here in Colorado that works on policy development, public engagement, outreach as part of local issues such as this. So we were given the opportunity to work with your city staff to help generate some community outreach and to get some more feedback from the community ahead of your making this decision. So I'd like to present some information to you that we received from the community. So just to remind you, there was a telephone town hall meeting done on August 8th. That is where you participated. You were able to discuss with citizens about this potential ballot question. Eight hundred people joined over the course of an hour with a peak attendance of about 272 people. In addition, the city worked with Lori Weigel of Public Opinion Strategies to do a scientific survey of community opinion on the bond question. That was done August 9th to August 12th. And specific to my work with you all and what I'm here tonight to report is we did a community mailer to broaden and try to engage a broader audience of community members. So around, from August 15th to 22nd, we sent a mailer that we worked with, with the city's staff, to about 41,668 households. And we were able to get feedback via an online survey, or community members could drop off a, filled out on the survey from the mailer, and we still entered that into the system. The overwhelming amount of responses were done online, but of all the ones that came back physically, we all got, all those entered into the system. So the mailer, as I said, went to 41,000 households. It had five questions, and there was one open-ended question. So it gave residents the ability to tell us what was on their mind. What were they thinking? What were their concerns? So it was available online or hard copy. We received 1,997 responses back from the community. I do want to remind you that it's an unscientific survey. It's a tool for seeking broader community feedback. The open-ended question, though, allows us to understand specific concerns, maybe concerns that aren't being addressed elsewhere, things to put into an FAQ or to be responded to by the city. So when I say it's not a scientific survey, scientific surveys have all those measures of the exact demographics. This survey was done much broader. So the only demographic questions we did ask were, what was your ZIP code and how long you've lived in the city? Generally, other surveys use a lot more data points to kind of build this profile of what the demography of this, of the audience is. So here you can see, you may have gotten one in the mailer to remind you of what it looked like, so you're remembering what I'm talking about. So the first question we asked was, are you aware? How much have you seen, read, or heard about this? And you can see from here that only 11% said they've heard a lot. 38% said some, 24% said little, 27, nothing at all. So some awareness out there, but there's, there's probably a need to get more awareness out there in the community about the city's work on this. It's been, you know, something worked on by three citizens committees. The council is putting a priority on this, city staff. So it would be good to keep, you know, keep getting information out there. Of course, after, if you take the step tonight to refer this to the ballot, obviously, it has to turn to a campaign effort and away from the city communicating about it. So we asked managing traffic congestion. Should the City of Arvada's plan to manage traffic congestion by widening Ralston Road, West 72nd Avenue, incorporating updated transportation travel technology be a high, medium, or low priority? And you can see 50% of people said high priority, 82% said medium priority. Safety and pedestrian access. Should completing bike lanes, sidewalks, addressing unsafe conditions for pedestrians improve access to major bus routes be high, medium, or low priority? And you can see it jumped up on the high priority to 56% here. Importance of not raising taxes. Interesting, because we put this on a scale of one to four, and the intensity dropped down a little bit with 43% saying extremely important that we're not raising taxes. Still, when you combine the 43 and 28, the extremely and very, it's a high number. Definitely, your citizens, your taxpayers, want to see these projects being done without a tax increase. The importance of the citizens committee, how important was it that citizen committees, that they had input in this and helped develop this plan, was a little less important. So 35% extremely important, 34% very important. So still, it's, you know, key to residents that they see and understand that citizens have been part of this. But from this measure, those safety, those pedestrian projects really are what people were responding to and really like about this plan. So we did ask a ballot question in this. So we did ask whether people would support yes or no. And you can see the language here. We include that it would be increasing the debt, that it would raise 79.8 million, there would be a repayment of 125 million, and that it would go to the Ralston Road and the 72nd Avenue projects. And then here is what people, 66% said yes, 22% said no, and 12% were unsure. So pretty strong response from those nearly 2,000 respondents. Here you can see by ZIP code how it breaks out. The dark blue line is yes, the lighter blue line is no, and the green is unsure. And then you can see by the hyphen of the line is how many responses we got back from those individual ZIP codes. And by residency, you can see that the vast majority of our responses came back from people who said they've lived in Arvada 21 years or more, and they were very supportive of this, as evidenced by the dark blue line. And then, so the length of the line again is how many responses we received by those different demographic units. So one-to-five-year residents responded a little, you know, second-largest group, and then those 21 or more longer residents responded the most to the survey. So I mentioned that we had an open-ended question where we let the respondents tell us what they think, provide us a little more feedback. And 1,127 people did reply and fill out the open-ended part. That was the only part of the survey that was not required to answer. So you could tell us something, you didn't have to. And you can see, we worked, we reviewed, my team reviewed all of these. We've provided these results to the city staff, so they can see these categorized and reviewed. But we put them in buckets, so we kind of try and quantify a qualitative answer. So you can see 330 respondents. Their comment was primarily about concern about debt, concern about the projects. 136 were kind of off-topic. They had a different issue they wanted to talk about, and they utilized the survey to voice their opinion on a different topic. 134 thought other projects were more important. 85 were concerned about traffic during. And then you can see, and then, you know, even down at the bottom, though, you can see at 37, there's the concern about eminent domain, which we heard Mr. Devon bring up, that that is part of the project. So, but overwhelmingly, debt and the cost of the projects were what were in those open-ended questions. So I'd happily take questions from you. We've provided this information to the city staff, your city staff team, and it was very helpful to see that feedback and be able to see the strong, I believe, a strong response to a survey like this from the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Ms. Ford, question for Ms. Ray?
Just a quick question on the response where other projects were more important. Did they actually identify that information?
Some did, absolutely. And I'm sure we can pull those out, and the city staff has that. And some did. Some noted other road projects, other projects throughout the city that they'd rather see. Yes, councilwoman?
I would love to get information, just for information's sake. On the top, well, the top three, I would love to see those comments on the top three, you know, the debt, the off-topic or complaints, and the other projects more important, to get an understanding of what those residents said.
I think staff understands that, and we'll get that. Mr. McGough?
Yes, thank you. We had to round off the numbers. We had about 2,000 responses. We had something a little less than 1,200 who responded to the open-ended question. Did you get any, do you have the figures of, who were the people who didn't respond or who did respond to that open-ended question? Were they the ones who've been here the longest? Were they different by ZIP code? Any other characteristics of those who chose to give responses to that last question?
Yes, councilman. Interestingly, I think it was really across the board. A lot of times when we do these responses, a lot of times, it's the noes who want to tell us something. This time, it was people who supported it, people who were unsure, people who were no, people who have lived here longer. Obviously, we had two ZIP codes in particular that had the highest concentration of responses. And there were a lot of folks from those ZIP codes, understandably, because they had the highest response rate. But interestingly in this, there is not, kind of, there wasn't a common thread about those who provided an open-ended response. Another one of these projects I'm working on in another jurisdiction in Colorado, it was almost all from the people who were opposed to it.
But here it was, both those who favored and those who did not favor it?
Across the board, sir.
Okay.
And we can, you know, we can also, we can sort these responses in any way based on what information we collected. We could sort them by ZIP code, we could sort them by people who said yes, by people who say they've lived here 21 years or more. We can, we can do any of those kind of sortings to help inform you better.
Okay, that's all I'm wondering. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
Thank you. I just have a quick question, your thoughts on the amount? So I saw some of your responses had to do with the amount and the amount of debt and the expense of the project. I recently had a community meeting where I asked the question to the participants that showed up, how much do you think it's going to cost to do this project? The guesses were between $500,000 and $1 million. I bet it would cost about $1 million to do this project. And people just have no concept of the cost. So what are your thoughts on the education that needs to go around that? And do you think this, that's going to be a huge hurdle that we have to overcome?
Councilwoman, I think that's a great question, because I do a lot of work on local government issues and public finance issues. And it is often a big part of what we call the public affairs part of this process where the governmental entity is soliciting public feedback, trying to seek more input on the projects, the costs. What is the community willing to pay for, whether it's road projects, or it might be a reservoir, stormwater projects? And I think a lot of times, people want to understand, okay, if there's, if it's going to cost this much, is there a significant benefit? Do I see this as important to my community? And is it going to help improve my life, make my life either safer, or help me get to work, or help get my children to school faster and safer? So I think what is important is to continue to communicate that citizen committees identify these as important projects, that the council, if you're all unified and unanimous, believe these are important projects. Yes, they, they're expensive, there's scales, there's reasons for these costs, but that they are going to deliver important benefits to the city via safety, traffic congestion, relief, future improvements to how we move around our city. So I think, in general, what you see is people really want to understand the benefits and how they will impact them, much more, I think, than kind of digging into the cost and understanding why this road project cost 16 million versus why this one costs 60 million. But at the same time, I believe accountability and transparency is equally important in how we as local governments spend taxpayer dollars. Because I think, I often say this to local governments I work with, is that one of the toughest decisions of a special district or a transportation district or a local government is that decision to ask for permission to raise taxes or to go and to do bonding? So that accountability, transparency, trust, I think are all a big part of that also for the taxpayers.
Okay, I don't see any other questions for you, Mr. Ray. Now let's hear from some folks in the public.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, sir. I have one person who signed up, Terry Binder, on behalf of the Transportation Committee. And I'm not going to be bound by the three-minute. I don't think we have many people who will be speaking tonight, so you may-
And I'll try to be quick.
You indicated to me five minutes, so that's fine.
Yeah. Mayor and members of council, thank you for letting me have the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here representing the Transportation Committee, who are, four members are sitting right over there, in support of this bond reauthorization. We support the widening of 72nd Avenue between Kipling and Sims, and that includes the grade separation at the Union Pacific Tracks and the widening of Ralston Road between Yukon and Garrison Street. Currently, I'm the Transportation Committee Chair, and as you know, our committee has been studying this, these capacity issues and these comprehensive plan arterials that have been on the comprehensive plan since 2014. So we started studying this in 2015, and we turned in a report to you, probably in 20, it took us about 18 months to do the study, and we turned that report into you after 18 months, and so you should have that. What we did is we looked at future land use, we looked at current zoning, safety issues related to first responders, existing volume-capacity ratios, future volume capacity, cost per mile, cost per trip, economic land uses served along each corridor, Dr. Cog 2014 key congested locations, and user-based cost per trip over a 50-year period. We did this for every corridor. We then prioritized each corridor listed in the comprehensive plan based on our findings and came up with two top corridors on the list. Ralston Road was number one, and West 72nd Avenue was number two. Now, we did not, we also looked at Indiana. But Indiana is kind of a different animal, because it is a state highway, and it's not really under Arvada's jurisdiction. So we did look at that. And we also, when we were doing our study, each member went out and drove the corridors in morning rush hour and evening rush hour, just to see, because- we live in all different areas of the city, and many times, we aren't out there in the mornings in that area to see what the congestion and what is actually going on. So we wanted to go see it for ourselves. The Transportation Advisory Committee is made up of eleven people who live in different parts of Arvada, and we were unanimous in supporting the two corridors you are discussing tonight, and unanimously support placing these two transportation corridors on the ballot this November for bond reauthorization. We have spent a lot of time studying these corridors, and recently voted unanimously to assist in the passing of this bond reauthorization question on the November ballot, if you approve that tonight. We recognize that building these projects will not get any cheaper to build than at today's cost, and we also realize that transportation costs go up four to five percent every year, the inflation rate, and so there's no time like now. We recognize that it would take at least twenty years to save up enough money to pay cash for something of this magnitude. We recognize the only way a city can afford to build projects such as these is to bond and make payments over time, just like all of us do when we buy a home. We, we take out a mortgage and we pay for that home over time. We feel that this is a prudent thing to do, and believe all Arvadans will benefit from added capacity, bike lanes, added sidewalks, and safety improvements on these two quarters. So with that, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Binder. Anyone else wish to address? Yes?
I'm Cindy Kreitzer, ninety-two hundred Grandview Avenue. It's been a while since I've been standing up here. I am really leaning towards supporting this project, especially the Seventy-second project. Ralston Road is a no-brainer. That has to be done, it's dangerous. But the Seventy-second Avenue project, my biggest concern is simply the money. I would hate to see it end up costing more than, than what we are planning for it to cost. You know, we had that problem with the parking garage, so I'd hate to see that happen again, especially since it is such a big price tag. But I'm getting a lot of questions answered by Mr. Devon and one of the city engineers, so they're working really hard to help me understand all of the things I need to know. I'm also a little bit concerned about some of the other projects that kind of took a backseat to the Seventy-second Avenue project that, that the CIP Committee considered. Some of those lost, lost everything that we had recommended. Some of them are, you know, cut back by half, and that kind of thing, so I am a bit concerned about that. And I hope that we manage to find a way to get some of those things done, you know, through some other source of money. I'm not sure exactly how that'll work, but, but there are some things that we're letting go that probably shouldn't be let go, at least in my opinion. And I really, I have to say that I, I very much appreciate how hard everybody is working to try and make sure that we all understand how this works, because it is a rather complicated thing when you, when you don't do this every day. I kind of get it, because I do kind of do it every day, but most people don't. So I've been trying to explain it in a way that's similar to how you pay your own personal bills. In this particular case, it's cheaper to do it through a bond than it would be to do it over time, and second of all, who wants to, who wants to do it in piecemeal over the next twenty-some years? That would be ridiculous. So I just wanted to let you all know, I plan on supporting this, I believe. I just need to get a few clarifications, and I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Kreitzer, I appreciate that. What other projects do you think we really need to be focusing on? Because you have been very involved with our Capital Improvement Committee, and, and so-
Well, you know, I don't have the list in front of me, but the first one that comes to mind is sidewalks.
Sure.
We took about half of the money away from the sidewalk project in order to, to put it toward the Seventy-second Avenue project, and that is a bit concerning. You know, I, I always make fun, because I, I have one about a hundred feet on my property that has no sidewalk, but I really don't care. But I think probably people who walk along there do care-
Sure.
-because it's, it's on Garrison, and it's kind of a major place where people walk, so I, I don't want that to take a backseat to anything else, I think that's important.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
James Russell, one oh one oh one, West Seventy-second Avenue. Thank you for letting us speak. I represent two families that live in one house. We've got people that are forty-seven, forty-seven years in Arvada, and we're the newest on the block, we've been there for two years. We went into it knowing that this was going to happen. We spoke with several people at the city, they were saying fifteen, twenty, not even, not even on the radar. And now it's, and now we're standing here, putting it on a ballot. Speaking for us, I, I believe we all agree that it needs to be done. We own two properties on the front. Out of the seven properties that, that are directly impacted, we own two of them. It's been proposed that we're going to lose one that we were planning to build a house The, the other property, we're going to have Seventy-second, thirty to thirty-five feet closer to the house, putting it roughly about thirty-five, forty feet from the house. Some concerns that we have, when you lose a property, it's pretty cut and dry. You come to an agreement, you take a check, and you walk away. The property value, we are, and also, we are one of three people that are going to maintain And things that we have concerns with is, is noise, it's a, it's a long project. What kind of noise mitigation, thirty-five feet from our house? What dust? We already have a dust issue, being, you know, seventy-five, eighty feet from Seventy-second. Bringing it thirty-five feet closer, there's going to be a, a lot of dust, and even more dust than just normal because of the construction. Noise. Is it a twenty-four, seven operation? Is it going to be Monday through Friday, seven to, seven to five? What kind of traffic are we going to, I mean, because, understanding what they got to do, they're going to dig a big hole. Seventy-second will probably be closed. Portions, I, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's a narrow, it's a narrow pathway now to make it twice as big and, and keep traffic flowing. I, I don't see it happening very easily. Are we going to have access to getting out onto Seventy-second? Are we going to have to go through the apartments? Are we, I mean, I, there's a lot of things that, that really have thrown flags. I think our biggest thing is, is, you know, one property, we, we know about what it's worth, but the house, losing property, putting, putting a road, you know, thirty-five feet closer to your house, it's, how do you, how do you, I mean, if we, if we go through it and decide that we're going to stay there for a while, five, ten years from now, when we try to sell it, it's going to be very difficult to sell, because who wants to live next to almost a freeway? You're talking forty, forty mile an hour traffic, four lanes. I mean, it's, it, we know it's needed, that, because, I mean, we listen all day long to people honking, because people are racing down the one lane to get over into the, into the, the left lane to, because that's what lane they have to be in when they, or they're going to hit a telephone pole. The other, the other thing is, is, I, I've asked this before, but nobody seems to, other than it's too big of an angle, I, I, I mean, I, I can draw lines, and it's not that big of a stretch to shift everything a little bit more south. They're leaning heavy to the, to the north side of Seventy-second, which is affecting, you know, either way, it's going to affect us, but if you put it down closer to where you have that really large easement on the, on the south side, the ditch can easily be put into a pipe and, and buried, and, you know, the traffic shifts a little bit over, and then you have all that room between the railroad tracks and oak to bring it back center. You don't have to make a sharp turn here and a sharp turn back. That's, that's just a, something that I think people should really look at. I don't know why they want to draw a straight line when they could, you know, I think it would affect people less by shifting it a little bit. Let's see. I, I think that's, that's really my biggest-
Right.
-concern, and our, our family's biggest concern is, you know, we made a huge investment two years ago, and how easy is it going to be for us to sell later? I mean-
Sir, what, what I can promise you is that the city council is very concerned about the consequences on the folks who are going to be affected there on the north side, and I'm sure staff will get back to you with regard to the timing of construction, and how all that's going to work, and access to the property and all that. That's something that we certainly don't have the answers for up here tonight-
Right, right.
-but our staff will get you those answers. And if they don't, you'll come back to us, and you will get your answers. But I'm confident that staff will get you your answers.
Okay.
Now, with regard to, you know, getting you fair market value, again, the city council and city councils before us, on these kind of projects, will bend over backwards to be fair to you, while still recognizing our responsibility to the taxpayers. We're not just going to give you a blank check-
Right.
-but we recognize the impact we're having upon you, and in, in the past, when we've had to do this, we've looked at that, in terms of relocation costs, in terms of top-dollar for, for fair market value, because frankly, if we can work out something that's fair to you, and avoid having the cost of going through the legal proceedings-
Right.
...to do this, I, for one, and I know the rest of the council feels the same way, we'd rather give you the money than to the lawyers to, to work this-
And I totally agree. I, I, I would much rather come to a-
Right.
-amicable-
Right.
-agreement, and to where it works for everybody than to go through legal battles-
Right.
...and stuff like that. I definitely understand that.
Yeah, and so we will, you know, I commit that we will do that with you, okay? And, and staff, I'm sure you will, you will take that approach on this, and, because frankly, we have had great success with working with people in the past, when we've had to do, and we're very reluctant to have to use eminent domain. We don't like to do it, but for a roadway project, for the, and this is one of those where the greater good, unfortunately, is pretty paramount, in terms of the number of citizens, and your own, your own comments tonight, in terms of the horn honking, and the reaction you're seeing on Seventy-second Avenue, is testament to what we've all seen as well.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's absolutely needed.
And I hope that you end up in a better place, and, and when we've had to do this in the past, we've actually helped people get to a better place.
That's, that, that leads to my, my next question. I had one last question.
Sure.
We're not losing our house. We're losing, we're losing a property that we were going to build a house for my son and his family. What we are going to lose is frontage. Did, the, the last question is, is, did Arvada look, did, did you look at purchasing one oh one oh one, or was that just not an option? I mean, we, I mean, that would be something that we would entertain as well, but I just, taking so much of it and putting everything right in front of the house-
Does it, does it do such an impact to the remainder that it would be better off to be bought out of the whole thing?
Correct.
And that's, and I think that's, that's something for you to certainly have discussions with staff on, and certainly, we want to have those discussions.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. And then, you know, I, I do want to indicate, we did receive an email from Deborah Mitchell, who couldn't be here tonight. We've all read her statement, it will be made part of the record. Also, one of the property owners makes a very impassioned, very appropriate statements in terms of, of the love and affection for their home, for the great memories they have of this home, and, and the, and the impacts it has upon them of losing that home, and, and we get it, and we're sorry, but it's, I think, a, a harsh reality of, of where we are, of, of unfortunately, having to have impacts, but recognizing that if we cause those impacts, there needs to be fair compensation back. So, yes, ma'am?
Mindy Moore, one one six eight zero, West Sixty-Six Place. I did fill out the online survey, and I leaned towards voting for the bonding proposal for these two streets. However, I know, I think we all know that much of the increased traffic, the VMT, on these roads is due to our city's ongoing growth, and questions are raised, I, I see these on posts next door and Facebook, from citizens asking why the new residential developments going in are not helping fund our road needs, rather than making all of the city shoulder the costs through the bonding. When I spoke to C.DOT, I learned that many cities utilize road impact fees. This is where the developer pays in a fee on a per-unit basis. It's similar to, you know, how they pay park or open space fees, and what it would do is go into a fund to help with road maintenance and new construction. So I would just urge city council to consider simultaneously having an ordinance for establishing a road impact fee. This would help create fairness for your current residents, that the new growth, which is heavily impacting the roads, also is helping pay for it, in addition to the bonding for these two specific roads. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And in fact, we do some of that. Mr. Devon, you want to respond on that?
We do collect road impact fees. I think I'd, I'd like to consult with staff to give you a more full explanation of that, and also, we are in the process right now of looking at all of our development impact fees, and considering, coming back to you, probably sometime by the end of this year, with some additional recommendations on how those fees can be increased and improved for you to consider.
Right. And I know of two projects that we might be considering here in the near future, where the development is going to have to pay some additional, excuse me, pay additional dollars towards traffic impact, so it's a very good point, and I think we are trying to address it. So, but, but we'll take heart your comments, and, and certainly work to make sure that we do have growth pay its own way. I mean, I think that's a fair assessment, an appropriate way to move forward. Anyone else wish to address the council? Yes? Mr. DiGiacomo?
Hi, my name is Ashanzo DiGiacomo, one two six three zero, West Sixty-Six Place, Arvada, Colorado. Just to comment on what she was saying, I think that's really important, something I've been talking about a little bit over the last number of years, about development paying its way and, and that kind of thing. I think that another thing would be, would be good to see an analysis of how, how the, the impact fees, if they were enacted, you know, for Candalis and, and for Leiden Rock, and just, you know, do an analysis and have you guys look at that, to see whether that, how, what kind of an impact that was, you know, what was for you financially, and, and moving forward. As a build-out of that, maybe there's something that could be revised or, or modified for the commercial that's going to come out there, too, because to me, I, I just think it's something that's, you know, you've got to kind of pay to play, and, and the new players, unfortunately, do have to bear some more burden than the existing residents, but I think that's the way it kind of has to happen moving forward. I was on the Capital Improvements Committee with regard to the recommendations, and just so the public knows, and it goes on record, that the CIP actually did put Seventy-second on this, their, their list. It was, it was funded for four hundred thousand dollars for a study, so that's what, that's what we did, and that's what we came to. At the time, there was, we knew it was kind of the elephant in the room, we did have discussions about it, but for some reason, we just thought, I guess, like the two thousand and seven committee, that it was just kind of too much to consider at this time. There's, I wish I could go back to some of those meetings and remember some of the detail. Cindy and Nancy and I both, all were on that committee. I am generally, you know, lean, leaning, you know, towards this project. I think that, that there's some important things that, that it's going to solve for the city. But I wonder, just a couple of questions I have, a number of questions I have, you know, is the timing of the ballot measure appropriate? And, and the, the greater question to me is, you know, if the existing bonds do expire, and they sit for a year or whatever, to another election cycle or two, or whatever, what is the effect of that as far as the city budget? Maybe Brian could answer that question, because I, I'm just afraid that we might go into an election cycle this year with two- I, I'm just afraid that we might go into an election cycle this year with two road ballot measures and, you know, trying to get the citizens to understand that this is no new taxes. It's a, it's a renewing of bonds. Um, you know, and just maybe it's just going to be a no, 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 you know, once again, you know, and, and maybe, you know, just to see if this was how well thought out that was and, and so on. Um, the other thing was, I had a question on, uh, you know, how much was council involved as far as, you know, is the timing of this? Um, it seems to me, I, I have no idea what the answer to that question is. It just seems to me that that would be something that you guys would, would talk about in a, in a workshop, you know, sometime months previous to this to, so you could lend all your expert opinions and experience with that kind of stuff and say, okay, this is the right time based on, you know, these factors that this, uh, the staff would represent or, uh, would, yeah, would, would tell you. Um, uh, I, we, I, I was, um, informed of an email, uh, sent from Matt today, I think. And my question on this is the, the negotiations with, with Union Pacific. Um, Matt says in the, in this email stated today, when the, um, we asked if, the, if it's possible that you, Union Pacific could pay for some of the costs for this moving forward, which to me seems like an an average question, a typical question that a citizen would ask. Um, his response was when the design consultant comes on board, one of the requirements for them will, will be to engage both the UP and the PUC in discussions about providing some funding for this project. To me, that seems like a something that should be done prior to something that you bring to the, to the community and, uh, and put on a ballot. Because that to me is going to be the, one of the number one questions that somebody's going to ask. Well, are they going to participate? What, what interest do they have? How much skin in the game do they have? And, and what, um, that might look like? Um, another thing that we asked a question on, or Cindy Kreitzer asked, provided a very thorough email with some good questions was the contingency. We asked if there was a contingency. Matt, uh, stated that there was a 15% contingency, which is about seven and a half million dollars for the, the UP underpass. Um, to me, working a couple of years out and not under, and understanding we're just working from preliminary plans, 15% is a little light. I would personally think that, based on my experience with engineering and stuff, that maybe 20 to 30% even at this time. So that gets me into my next question is, I think it's very important, and I think that it's important that you guys tell the citizens and, and, um, if people involved that are interested in this, which is going to be everybody, um, what's going to happen if it does go into cost overruns? I think there should be a plan that moving forward, whether it's today or throughout this, this period, I know that once today you guys get it on the ballot, you really don't have a lot of say in it. I know the city doesn't. Um, but maybe, um, you guys could address that. I think, like Cindy brought up the parking garage, um, that was an, to me, that was an astronomical amount of money for, um, something that, uh, that at the time seemed like, you know, sort of a slam dunk, uh, you know, thing. Um, the next thing is, I just wanted to, uh, talk about was, I think some of the things and some, I'm kind of thinking forward here as far as what some of the citizens might ask on some of these questions. And I think it's, you know, to be included on the ballot information would be an understanding of how are we going to get all of 72nd done? Okay? So we did the, the section between, uh, Wadsworth and I don't know when that was. I wasn't here at the time. But I know that was quite contentious and that took some time to get that done. Now we're going to do this section. And then we've got, now we've got from Sims to Indiana to do. And, um, and I, I just see, you know, the traffic on Ward Road and the fact that that may not, never get extended being an issue. And, you know, what, what are we going to do with this? So we've got this beautiful road that gets to Sims and then we're down to another bottleneck all the way out to Indiana. And Ward Road being the state highway, and as you all know, um, the traffic counts on Ward Road, uh, you know, are getting, increasing every day. And, um, it's not going to go down. So anyway, just, I'd love to hear a few answers to those questions if you could tonight. If not, maybe we can just continue this discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Di Giacomo.
Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay, let's, um, look at it from a perspective of, first of all, I think that we will get back to Mr. Di Giacomo and some of his questions certainly in terms of, of, um, some of the issues he has raised. Uh, obviously, working with the homeowners is a huge priority. Uh, any, um, action that council, why don't we get a motion on the, on the floor and then we can, uh, react to it? Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I moved at our 18-091 a resolution submitting a ballot question to the electors of the city regarding the issuance of the City of Arvada bonds in an amount of $79.8 million with a repayment cost of up to $125 million with no increase in taxes be approved.
Motion's for approval.
So that, that's my motion. I just want to make a comment to it before, before I vote. So, uh, I am going to be voting for this motion. Um, I think, uh, a couple of our speakers tonight have, have brought it up. Uh, as a council, we have looked at this pretty exhaustively, um, you know, beginning probably nearly a year ago, certainly, certainly this winter. Um, these questions that people have, we've asked, uh, council has asked, and, and we've, you know, developed strategies based upon that. I think a couple of the key points here is, is that, one, this is the least expensive way to do these projects. Um, we really have two choices in doing them. One is to borrow money and do them all at once and pay the interest that it costs to, to borrow money. Or two would be to save up or sequester money to be able to do it as we have enough money to do it. And the difference there is the inflation in the costs of building roads is higher than the interest rate that we would be paying. So even if we, uh, decided to pay as we go, it would be more expensive, would cost by, by a reasonable amount of money to do it. So one, this is the least expensive way to do it. Two, the large benefit is, is that by bonding against these and doing them now in just, you know, uh, several years, the citizens will have a number of years of use of these civic assets, uh, that they wouldn't have if we tried to do it pay as we go. Um, I look at the 72nd segment from Kipling to, uh, to Oak and down to Sims as a pretty critical segment. I grew up very close to there. And those roads had big traffic on them 20 years ago and they, and it's only gotten worse. And because that underpass project is such a large project, we really don't have any ability to do it one annual capital improvement budget at a time. So this is kind of the only way to do it. So, uh, you know, make no mistake, we're going to spend your capital improvement dollars one way or another, either a little at a time or all at once. If we spend them a little at a time, we have to do smaller projects and we can't take on these very large, uh, projects. So I've looked at it very much. I'm generally very skeptical of, you know, bonding in, in my own personal life or borrowing in my own personal life as well as for the city. But having considered it very carefully, I think this is, is absolutely the best, uh, way to, to do this and get what I think are the two most important projects in the city done. So I'll be voting yes.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you. Not to, um, say anything that Mr. Marriott said, um, but I'll probably repeat a couple of things. But I first want to thank the Transportation Committee and the Capital Improvements Committee. Because I believe that over the last five or six years and maybe even a little longer, um, those committees have done a lot of really good work, um, helping to identify projects. Um, and so, you know, like Mr. Marriott said, I, I think that, um, these two projects are, um, indeed the, the two biggest ones. I've had several emails and phone call conversations with people over the last several weeks with regard to why these, why not something else? Why not Indiana? Why not 80th? And, and there's complexities with every project. But specifically with Indiana, it's a state highway. Specifically with 80th. 80th comes in and out of Arvada, so we don't have complete jurisdiction on 80th. Um, and I agree, 80th and Indiana need to be addressed at some point in time. But I don't know that, um, we could use this bonding measure to fix either one of those two. Um, I also agree with Mr. Di Giacomo. And I think instead of saying your address every time, if you could just spell your name, that would be much better for me.
[laughing]
No, but, but I think you're spot on with your comment about, okay, so now we've got this beautiful road that goes from Wadsworth to Sims, um, and then we bottleneck back down. I, I, I agree that we have to have a plan from Sims to Indiana. Um, and that's something that I, I think that through our normal capital dollar spend, um, we've got to put projects together. Now, does that mean that 72nd is going to be under construction for the next 10 years? I don't know. I hope not. Um, but it absolutely is something that we have to get done at some point in time. Unfortunately, there's not enough money in this bond, um, to address the rest of 72nd, um, because Ralston Road has to be done. Um, if Ralston Road didn't have to be done, then maybe we might be able to get all of 72nd. So there, there's a, a lot of moving parts. But I think the most important thing is that we have to continue the conversation. And if this is approved tonight, um, a couple of you have mentioned that, yeah, now the city kind of backs away from the conversation and it's up to us as citizens, um, to help spread the message. Right, wrong, or indifferent, uh, people are going to agree or disagree. But I think it's important for those, um, for everybody to get the questions answered so that they can make an intelligent, uh, recommendation when the ballot comes out, um, for, for city to use those funds. Um, if I didn't say this, I'll say it now. But I am absolutely 100% in support of this. And I'm hoping that over the next several months, again, if this is passed tonight, that collectively as a citizenry, we can do our part to ensure that, um, we help people understand why this is important. Um, so I appreciate all the comments tonight, especially the homeowners that are going to be directly impacted by this. I'll just again reiterate what the mayor said. This was, um, of and is most important to us as council that, um, we take your thoughts and concerns into consideration. And we recognize, uh, the impact on your families. Um, and it's not easy. Um, but I appreciate all of your comments tonight. So thank you.
Mr. Fiverr?
Thank you. And in addition to my, my peers' comments, I'd like to add a few more things that make it important as well. Uh, knowing several first responders within the community, uh, the reason we did a grade separation, or one of the reasons we did grade separation at the Wadsworth bypass was, uh, the access to get first responders to the south side of the city as well as getting to Lutheran. Um, that is unfortunately the closest hospital. It's either there, you can go to Good Samaritan or, but far away. So, um, you know, when you talk to our fire district and you talk about, uh, the ambulances will avoid anywhere where they may be stopped by a, a rail line. So, um, we have rail lines going north and south that have been separated. We don't have any that are east and west. And so that becomes a, a challenge for our first responders. So I do think that we need to have that for critical infrastructure to have that grade separation so that we can ensure that our communities remain safe. Uh, the other thing is, is about the whole, I want to kind of highlight or, um, illustrate kind of the importance of pay it now or, or pay it over time. When you sit there and you look at the compounding factor of just say the $65 million just for the grade separation, which is a, is a big chunk to take, it could take us 15 to 20 years just to save the money with the inflation to just do that one project. And by that time, we probably will never do it because it's, uh, it's a challenge to try to save your pennies up to do that when you have so many competing projects. So it's, it's good to use today's dollars. I want to really highlight that today's dollars, because I know Mr. Marriott said it, and pay the 65 million plus interest for that one project versus paying for that one project almost double that price and take 20 years, not three years to get it done. So, um, I think it's good for today, not for tomorrow, uh, to get it, get it going. Uh, so therefore, I will be supporting this, uh, ballot, uh, measure and looking forward to the public supporting us on it. Um, it's a very important thing for our community. Uh, you know, this is a great opportunity for us to take one bite at a time, like Mr. Jones has said. You know, we do have a plan or we did have, we did Wadsworth to Kipling, we wind it. You only solve it one bite at a time. So this is the next bite in doing this. And in fact, I think it goes beyond Indiana. I think it goes to Quaker if you really want to know, if you want to look at the whole comprehensive corridor. Um, but we, we got to keep taking these sections because it, it is an east-west. All of our east-west are very narrow. And this is just the next bite into that. So I look forward to everyone supporting us and getting this passed, uh, this November.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you. I will speak to two things. Um, I will be supporting this. And, you know, my heart has been with the homeowners every step of the way and in every meeting that we've had. And my peers will tell you that this was really, you know, top of mind for all of us. I would like to address the issue of timing. Um, on the ballot, Mr. Di Giacomo, sorry, I said your name wrong. Did you?
Di Giacomo.
Di Giacomo. I used to get it always right when I was the chamber president. Every time you used to compliment me on that. Tonight I just can't get it right. I apologize. But every day it gets more expensive. You know that more than all of us. Um, and we took that into consideration and knowing that I think it's going to be our job to educate, our job and everybody's job here to educate folks to vote from the bottom of the ballot up. And, and these are the areas that, that impact you the most are the things at the bottom of the ballot and, and make sure that we get people's support on that.
Mr. McGough?
Yes, thank you. Uh, the biggest takeaway from Mr. Ray's presentation is that there's a need for conveying more information yet to the, uh, community. And, uh, to that end, we'll be taking into account the, uh, comments of those who spoke this evening, uh, Mindy Moore and talking about the impact fee, which was also mentioned by, uh, Mr. Di Giacomo. And also the, um, the whole idea of contingency, um, the railroad participation, uh, a backup plan in case there's, uh, uh, significant changes necessary. And a plan for eventual completion of 72nd, at least completion, uh, further to the, to the west. So all of those things will be taken into account. Um, but the primary thing is concerning the ballot issue itself, uh, we'll do our best to, um, make sure that information gets out through the Citizens Committee. And, uh, uh, to the, to that end, I will be supporting the motion. I'd like to thank Mr. Russell for bringing to our attention once again the, uh, the impacts upon the property owners, uh, at the, on the north side of, um, Kipling, just west of 72nd. Uh, you can be sure that, uh, we will be as sensitive and as responsive as possible to the, uh, impacts upon you and your neighbors. So thank you very much for your comments. But yes, for the reasons mentioned by the other council members, I will definitely be supporting the motion.
Ms. Ford?
Um, I agree with everything that's been said by my peers, uh, tonight. And I too will be supporting the motion. And I just wanted to respond to several comments that were made, um, to you, Mr. Russell and your neighbors. I personally can't imagine what it's like to have your property in that position. So I, I want you to know that I too feel your pain as much as anyone can feel who is not actually in your situation. And, uh, and I do believe that this city will take care, uh, as best as we can. Um, and, um, I just wanted to, uh, respond to Cindy and Ashenzo that I too appreciate your comments about the cost, uh, potential cost overruns. And I think that that's something that I feel confident that this city council and our staff will make sure that we will do our best to not have cost overruns. That we are looking into this seriously as we do with all things. And, uh, we'll make sure that we manage this project in a, in a great way. And I just think that, you know, all these questions are excellent. Um, I think that the city is going to be far better, uh, having this project done. Um, it's something that needs to be done. And, um, I agree with, uh, uh, what has been said about, uh, debt. I too don't like debt and avoid it as much as I can, uh, as well. But I think that the benefits will far outweigh, uh, in the future, doing this. And, and I, I feel confident that from the facts that I've seen, that it will be less, it should be less based on what we've heard, uh, by doing it this way as opposed to waiting years and years, uh, collecting the money. So I will be voting for it.
Thank you. So it's because, I think, of the fiscal responsibility of this and, and councils before us, that we're in a position that we can ask our taxpayers to authorize bonding. We have a triple A bond rating. There are not many places who can say that. And it's because of our fiscal conservative approach, because of great city management, uh, great finance department. great finance department, and because we don't look at these issues lightly, that we really put it through some pretty strong testing before we ever consider going to the citizens to authorize bonding for large projects. It was mentioned that Seventy Second Avenue was the elephant in the room. And indeed, it was an elephant in the room. And frankly, I applaud staff for their work, for the citizens groups who have advocated so strongly for it, and for the city council for being willing to bite the bullet and say, yes, it is an elephant, but we need to, to take steps to address the needs on, on that important project. I agree that Ralston Road was pretty much a no-brainer. We know we need to complete that. In fact, when staff first presented the concept of Seventy Second Avenue, they only talked about going to Oak Street. And it was because your city council said, let's try to get as much of it done as possible this go-around, that the decision was made to go ahead and seek funding that would get us all the way to Sim Street. Staff will continue to work on funding the next segments of it. But getting that under-passed in, for safety reasons, as Mr. Pfeifer has correctly pointed out, and for the congestion issues that it creates for us, that's a big chunk. And the only feasible way to do that is indeed through one-time expenditure through bonding. We can certainly look at incremental segments of Seventy Second Avenue further to the west once we get this big, big chunk done, just as we did with the big chunk from Kipling to, to, to Wadsworth and beyond. It's the right projects. When you talk about the timing, there's never a good time to go on the ballot, frankly. There's always going to be competing issues. And Ms. Miller is exactly right. Let's vote from the bottom of the ballot up. Because those are the issues that we can have the greatest impact on, on a local level, or those local issues that are going to be bottom of the ballot. So, I urge people to, to, to vote from bottom up. Don't skip the top of the ballot, but certainly pay attention to the items that are most important to you, closest to home, at the bottom of the ballot. So, for those reasons, for the great work that I think staff has done in putting together the best package possible, for the courage of city council based upon guidance of great citizens for giving their input, I strongly urge people to, to support this measure as it moves forward. And I will certainly be voting positively to put it on the ballot. So, Ms. Ford and, and Ms. Miller, if you'll cast your votes, all votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. We're, you know, I will commit that I think the city council will work very hard. We'll have great citizens involved in this. We'll comply with all campaign laws in terms of keeping the city government out of it, because that's what we're required to do, and that's how we will do it. But we will get information out to try to answer as many questions as possible, and urge our citizens to look at it very seriously. And I hope they'll vote, as I am going to vote, in support of this. Thank you. Why don't we take a brief break before we do our next portion?
Good idea.
Very good. Thank you.
Council on what assumption changes we have made to our tenure plan. We will get into the meat of the actual details on the 24th and on October 8th. And then ultimately, hope that City Council will adopt the budget on the 29th of October. We'll run a quick overview tonight. Do want to remind everybody that we now have added two more years to the plan. So if you remember last year, we ran till 2026. This year, we go till 2028. That certainly seems like a long, long time away. I would like to say that our first tenure plan actually ran through the year 2020. So it'll show you how far we've come. And I think if a few previous council members were here, they'd give me a hard time about how we were supposed to be broke in 2020. Thank goodness, we are not broke in 2020. As you see, these are some of the larger assumptions that we make for all of our funds. First, our market rate adjustment. We do have 2% each year set aside for that. In 2019, hearing from not only our HR staff, but many different members of our department directors and our employment team, we have wage pressure. And so we've added 1% to that. So instead of 2% in 2019, it is 3%. You will see as the pay plan comes out that we're going to be a little bit under that number, but it does include some significant changes to the police. And that is why that number is going to be a little bit larger. We have kept that number at 2% moving throughout the rest of the plan. Healthcare, there was no changes. So you can see that it's a little bit, looks a little bit random. But those numbers, we work with our benefits consultant on trying to achieve each one of those. We have many levers we can pull, including changes to the plan itself. So we'll get into that a little bit more later on. We did move the Cadillac tax out to 2022. It originally called to be implemented in 2020. And finally, our line items, we did reduce from 3% to 1.5. We kept that the same. There were updates to our internal service funds. What you will hear is we are able to update our vehicle funds, our risk fund, and our vehicle maintenance. We are still working on our computer and our building replacement models. Technology seems to be put in place in almost everything that we're doing. And so we're looking at making sure that as we put stuff in, we can make sure we can pay for that, maintain it, and replace it. And so you will hear updates to both of those models throughout the next couple of budget cycles. So get your reading glasses out. As you can see right now, our tenure model in the general fund, or maybe you can't see it, but shows that we are balanced throughout the 10 years and show a small reserve of approximately $3 million in the last year. Councilmember Marriott pointed out that that $3 million was put there as part of City Council in 2018, at the beginning of this year. So if you remember, that was the money that was unspent in 2017. We were able to maintain that throughout the tenure model. And that was unspent one-time funds. A quick look at some of the changes we made to the general fund. Predominantly, changes related to revenue. And we'll run quickly through those. Anything in yellow are changes to our assumptions. You can see that we have become a little conservative, a little more conservative on the sales tax side. That will give an explanation to why. And you can see that we are looking at building revenues that are slowing down for the next few years to a base in 2023, which we will then expect to grow from there. We do have a little bit of increase in interest revenue as short-term rates continue to grow. As many of you are well aware, long-term rates are not growing at the same pace as short-term rates. And so for you that follow in the markets, we're getting very close to an inverted model, which gives us a little bit of concern. But we are on the short side from an investment as we have a average duration around two years and we have less, we are not allowed to go out any further than five years anyway. So short-term interest rate growth actually helps the city of Arvada in our investment Sales tax, graphically, you can see what it looks like from a proposal for the next 10 years. 2018 at a 4% growth, that is exactly where we are right now. We're thinking we'll have a little bit slower, more return to the mean in 19, and then a slowdown 2020, 2021. A little bit more conservative in '22 and '23, and then return back to a regular growth pattern '24 through '28. You may ask, where did we come up with a lot of that? What we're looking at is growth throughout the city. So right now, you're seeing intense growth, as you've seen from '11 through '17. We're filling in many of the commercial properties. And so the likelihood of increasing that does not exist. Our growth now in the commercial space is going to have to happen out West. Big box retail is also starting to go away. And so lucky enough, the city doesn't have a lot of that. We are converting more to an online space. We have talked that many retailers are collecting. We're now uncertain about what's going to happen with Wayfair. I think Mayor Williams pointed that out the last time we spoke. The hope is that that will help increase this model. I would like to point out, this model does not include changes related to Wayfair. So if we do start collecting internet sales, we will be back to City Council discussing what our estimate on that revenue will look like and how we would expect that to be spent. We do feel like that's going to still take some time. The state is currently working out what they want to do on that. And so we're feeling a little bit conservative on this, and we will come back to you hopefully in next year, but it's probably going to be a couple of years down the road.
Have you already factored in the Amazon numbers, though?
They are in.
The Amazon numbers are part of this?
Yes, they are. Amazon and any other retailer that has collected and agreed to collect voluntarily sales tax for us, internet is in. Auto use tax, one of our largest revenue producers. And you can see over the last few years has grown exponentially. We had a little bit of a blip in 2016, but right back at it in 2017. What you'll notice is in 2018, '19, and '20, we're expecting that number to go down. So I think I had come a few years ago and presented that we thought those numbers would go down sooner. It kind of pushed itself off in '17. We're blaming the hailstorm. That makes our numbers feel better for us. But we did have that hailstorm in May, which required a lot of replacement and purchase of new vehicles. We're now seeing what we had expected of that growth model to kind of take a dip. People kind of replace their cars on a cycle, and we're expecting that cycle to kind of go down for a few years and then come back up again. New construction, if you remember, I felt like a broken record for many years as this continued to grow. We did see a pullback in '17, and we're seeing an additional pullback in '18. The pullback is really a return to the mean. It's not a slowdown. It's not going back to where we were in '08, or '09, or even in '10. It's going back to what we were expecting. And so our budget does reflect that. And you can see on the building revenue side, we're showing more what our expected budget is, which is approximately $4 million per year. We feel very comfortable with those numbers and do feel like we can keep that going for a period of time. Again, if building construction grows from that number, that will go into what we call our one-time items and can be used towards one-time projects. On the expenditure side, you will notice we made some adjustments to vacancy savings. That has a lot to do with the low unemployment. And so when unemployment is low, it's difficult to get candidates to come work for government. And so we definitely see that that vacancy is a little bit higher with the expectation that that number will flip as we move throughout our model back to a normal. We did reduce fuel usage. We did reduce electricity. If you remember, a few years ago, we've been putting items in place as directed by City Council as part of your strategic results to reduce the type of energy and the type of fuel, and that has certainly helped to save us money moving forward. And in street maintenance, we continue to be at approximately $10 million with 2.5% growth. That is still $6 million less than what we need, and we will continually be looking towards how we can add to that. A few positions that have been added since the 2018 budget, a municipal inspector and a traffic technician. Those are in the model today. We also are proposing adding three additional positions, an administrative assistant, technical services analyst, and a building maintenance worker. All of these items are in the model that you saw. If we quickly move to the parks fund, you will see that the parks fund also makes its tenure plan. Some small changes. We did adjust open space for the growth. We did add to the parks fund, city cash transfer, approximately $60,000. In 2019, it grows to $80,000 by 2020. This was to help offset the increases in internal fund transfers. And we did reflect the festivals revenue that they have been receiving each year. This was just a model change, not a change to what they were doing from an operations We made sure to fund the operational costs for any new park. So there were many parks that are adding to their facilities, Long Lake Ranch as an example, Stinger Lutz as an example. Lights, when you add new facilities, you add increased costs or changed costs. And we made the commitment many years ago that if we were to add a park, we would pay the operations, and that is reflected in the parks model. We did add one position. They have requested additional that are not included in this current plan. As we look at the TI funds, both of them are looking at building out on the Delta Station. So the first TI fund has approximately $2 million left in the model. They will be continually adding positions as we grow out the Delta Station. That will reduce that fund balance. And on the T2 fund, the .25, same story. They're also looking at adding positions. But to give perspective, adding one police officer costs approximately $1 million in a tenure plan, including putting in the vehicles and everything else. And that's on the low side. And so if you look at these two and say, hey, let's just spend that money, the best that they could do would be to add two police officers. And so they are certainly looking at ways to cut their costs and change what they're doing. One of those is related to the Jeffcom transition. So if you remember, we moved many positions over to Jeffcom earlier this year. There will be some savings related to that, to both of these funds. That's included. So that is part of this tenure plan. They added one additional staff member, which is a police services technician. They did add some additional vehicles. So what they found out with the sector-based policing is that there's periods of time where vehicles are all out, all over the city, and they're underutilized. The cars aren't available for what they need. And so by adding these additional positions, they will not have vehicles that are run inappropriately. In essence, we were wearing out vehicles quicker than they should have been worn out. We were struggling with cars when they were down for service, having to skip service, et cetera. So by adding these vehicles, it will help get them back to a normal level funded area as far as cars go. The water fund, certainly a healthy fund balance. But what you will notice is that if we take away the approximately $25 million, that is for reserves in the future, they would be sitting at a fund balance of about $9 million on the operating side. Wastewater, same story. $14 million fund balance at the end, but approximately $13 million of that is reserved for projects that are outside of this tenure plan. Stormwater, you will notice that there's a couple of periods of time where the stormwater fund actually falls below their recommended fund balance. But by the end of the tenure model, by balancing their capital spend, they get back in line. You will hear more about the rate increase when Jim comes and does his annual water rate, wastewater, stormwater rate presentation. But right now, he's calling for a 2.9% on the water side and a 2.5% on wastewater and no change to stormwater. We are waiting for a few more things to come back from Denver Water and from Metro, but we feel pretty good with these numbers. Golf fund, one that we've been talking about both through the budget process and through our quarterly reports, meets its tenure plan in the last year, but certainly is under the plan for many of the current years. They are doing quite well. They are doing exactly what they said they would be doing out at Westwoods. They're hoping to get Lake Arbor open here in the next couple of months, and then we will know better next year with a full year under our belt if our estimates are correct. And I do want to repeat, they are making the estimates today. Some of the changes on the golf side. The plan does call for fee increases. It calls for fee increases every couple of years to make sure that stays current with the increases in debt. That will be part of Gordon's presentation when he comes back in October. The restaurant side will also be looking at fee increases, certainly have already had a round of that. They will also be looking to keep up with the plan as it was called out. And they are exchanging temporary wages for a full-time position at Westwoods. What they have noticed is with the increased volume, they are not able to meet that need with just a temporary staff member, though the costs, when figured out, are almost a net because this position will also work on growing the game, will also work on selling the simulator, and will work on selling additional tournament packages. They feel very comfortable that they can cost cover this position. If they do not, they will eliminate it in the next budget cycle. Hospitality fund, again, meets its budget in the tenure cycle, and we've talked about this before. A lot of what they're working on now is that feasibility study. They've established a community need. They still need to work on a possible location, and we're still working through whether or not they continue at the center. They have a lot of large capital needs. That is what their fund balance is for. That is currently on hold until the items above get figured out.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Pfeiffer.
Hey, Brian, is, when this is looked at, how does, the golf and hospitality are separate, even though hospitality runs the kitchen right at the golf?
That is correct.
So the, is there any cross of revenue between, or expenses, you know, between?
So they actually do transfers?
They do transfers?
To try to keep track? Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, so they actually kind of bill each other back and forth to try to keep track. Now, is that perfect? No, but they do the best they can.
Yeah, that's fine. And where does, that shows up under transfers, or how does that show up on the line items?
It's going to show up. What we do for finances, they just, we just reduce the supplies in one and put the supplies in the other.
Oh, so, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Brian.
So the last few sides, slides, always talking about the future as we're doing a tenure plan, still working on what Public Works is going to need as far as a satellite facility in the northwest part of Arvada. We're still working through security, both from a structural perspective and from a data perspective. As we add additional data to an additional security to buildings, we realize that our risk grows. And I think we had a presentation a few months ago by Jimmy in IT talking about this, and the volume of this is incredible. Just the new Westwoods facility, I think, has something like 45 cameras, where we went from two. And so that's quite a difference. And each one of our buildings is going to grow in that aspect. And so getting our hands on that is challenging, but we're, I think, our IT department's up for the challenge. On the infrastructure side, we've talked about street maintenance. Certainly, we heard earlier from some citizens around sidewalk and trail gaps. We're continually working on that. We have the five high priority areas that we're going to work on getting implemented. Conduit and fiber, we've hit the ground running, and we're doing quite well. I think the quote was, we had 11 miles before the last couple of years, and in the last couple of years, or the last 18 months, we've added 11 miles. And so we're really doing what we need to do there. You'll notice the G-line is in red.
It certainly is. Mr. Pfeiffer's got a question for you.
Yeah, it sure is in red. So on the, real quick, going back to the data security, because that is a growing issue. And remind me, I'm sorry, I know we do this so many times, I think I should have this down, but IT is funded out of the general fund? Is that how that's funded?
So, would you like to answer that? Actually, IT is an internal service fund, so it's funded by all of our funds. So everybody contributes to that? So golf, water, general fund?
Everyone pays for what the IT services they use, the support services.
Correct.
So with this data security one, and this has been a hot topic lately, I've noticed in some of my other committees and so forth, and it looks like there's a lot of discussion around what are governments doing to secure the data? Because, because we've become so reliant on data to make decisions and to operate at the end of the day, you know, not that we have to reveal anything here, obviously, but, I mean, are we looking like for data experts to be part of our staff? Are we going to rely heavily on consultants? I mean, because it's something that we got to talk about now because it's coming faster, I think, than, than this tenure plan.
Sure, let me add a little bit, and I think Mr. Devon will add to my part, but I know that the IT area is actually creating a whole focus on this. And so they're taking staff members, resources, and creating exactly what you're talking about. They're very committed to it and understand the ramifications of it. Mark, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, so I think what I will add, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and Councilman Pfeiffer, is that our IT group has performance measures around security requirements. And in monitoring those performance measures, we are seeing that we're falling short. So as a result, we've put an additional focus on data security, and we've increased the expenditure in the technology fund. And I can't remember the exact amount, but it's right around $100,000 a year, if I remember correctly. And that is to shore up our systems and make them more data secure.
You also notice that we have an additional position in the IT fund that will be focusing on this.
Okay, yeah, because I think we need to focus on having somebody here watching that and kind of representing the city's interests versus relying always on consultants or, you know, kind of almost need a data security scientist, I guess. I don't know, these titles get bigger and bigger, but, but something to that effect would be, I just want to make sure we keep it focused in our tenure plan.
If I could step in here. We also have Jimmy Dominguez, who's very well networked, and he is participating in regional groups related to IT security. So in addition to his expertise and the expertise that we have contracted in at times, he is monitoring that from a connection with other government agencies. So it's not just our own experience, but we're tapping the experiences of others.
Yeah, you know, I guess I never experienced it in my 25 years until coming to IT, until I started working for the state. And the CDOT had this thing called a ransomware, and it took two months down, and productivity dropped 50% within the department. So, I mean, it's, not only is it for the operation of the city, I mean, it impacts productivity within the, within the city. So something we should keep an eye on.
Thank you. And certainly demographics, we've talked a lot and then received some wonderful presentations related to that, and we will continue to work on both our challenges from a homelessness perspective and the growth and density that we're seeing throughout the city, and then our overall changing demographics, which change the demands and needs of our citizens. Each year, we bring to City Council some items that we would call one-time in nature, and these are either projects or items that were part of budgets that were not funded in the past, or items that have came as part of this year that we feel like we could go ahead and fund. And so what you see here is a list that we've talked about and would propose for funding and are already included in the tenure plan that you saw. Okay? So the biggest item there is related to the Parks Building, and this was to cash finance the Parks Building at approximately $8.7 million. $3 million of that will come from the general fund, and the remaining 5.7 will come from other sources. You will notice down at the bottom, a couple of items related to IT, a two-factor authentication, which will help with security. Enterprise computer, which really is software. We are in the process of replacing all of the software, or all of the computers here at the city. And as part of that, we need to put in an enterprise-wide software solution that will keep employees like myself from downloading items that can cause issues with the city. And so this goes across all of the different computers. And you laugh, but I am guilty. I am one who has caused an issue by opening a file that should not have been opened. And so they're trying to make this the best they can for people like myself.
Is that why we all had to take that class?
Uh, yeah.
But in defense of Mr. Archer, I too. So, so both of us have required you to take that class.
Sorry about that. And MARK actually stands for, it's a big acronym, but basically, this is a computer that is shared between Denver and Lakewood, and it's part of our radio system. And so I don't know exactly what MARK stands for, but this is to help replace that and move that onto the city's database so that we're not solely reliant upon Lakewood and them running our radio system.
Mr. Jones, and then Mr. McGough.
Thank you. So I just wanted to make sure that MARK wasn't for the mayor to learn how to use his iPad.
I'm not sure that would be enough.
Why, oh, thank you.
No, I do have, I do have two real questions.
Seems like CU education's much better than CSU education, and certainly we'll find out, we'll find out how the football game goes this year.
Was there a football game this weekend? I don't remember.
So on the Parks Maintenance Building, if I, if I understand correctly, the way that that's been designed now, the current building will remain in use while the new building's being constructed, and then the old building will ultimately be destroyed, or taken down is probably a better word. And so in that $3 million, that also includes the decommissioning of that old building, or are there additional costs for that?
So my understanding is it would include the decommissioning of that other building. What it would not include is if we decide to use part of that other building for some other purpose, like cold storage or file storage or something to that extent. So no additional changes to that building are included, just taking it down.
Okay. And then what is a courtroom backdrop?
Mayor, would you like to answer that one? So what that is, is designing an appropriate backdrop that would sit in this courtroom that would sit behind the judge.
We are attempting to make the courtroom look like more of a courtroom.
Courtroom. So.
For which room? Which room was this?
For this room?
This room or that room?
For municipal court.
Yeah. And this is an item, the hope is that this can be done by our internal staff, but right now, we've been putting them on so many different projects, including finishing up the Lake Arbor project. And my understanding is their list has all of a sudden grown additionally to like nine more months out, that we're not sure that this will happen.
Okay.
But the hope is that they can come in and do it, and then that cost would basically almost go to nothing. It would just be the cost of supplies.
Thank you.
Mr. McGough?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Archer. On that one-time strategic funds, could you give us some background on this demolishing of the Fox House?
Absolutely. So that's on the next screen. And so these are items that are pending, so they're not in the financial plan, but they're items that have been brought up by both, and actually, I jumped ahead a little bit, didn't I?
Actually, it is on the.
It is on this one, sorry.
It's on the committee.
Sorry, Councilmember McGough.
Yeah.
I got excited there.
I'm looking at the other.
We'll get to the next one soon. So what that is related to is that Parks has brought to us that the Fox House really needs to come down for many, for many, many reasons. And let me get my notes because I spoke to Gordon today. So they had a septic issue a few months ago that caused some irreparable damage to the building. They also had a raccoon break in that got trapped between the walls and then ate his or her way out. They had a break in. We have some rodent issues. And ultimately, it would be more expensive to repair the building to be able to be used with the need for an ADA update with the items that I mentioned. And then there's some electrical issues that would need to be cleaned up before anybody could be in the building anymore, even to live in the building, that it would be cheaper to remove it. The master plan also does not call for that property to be there, and so this would be moving along the master plan of the nature.
Currently, it's just used for storage.
Correct. That is correct. Right now, the garages are just being used for storage.
I have one other, just a comment, perhaps a suggestion. You made reference in the expenditure assumptions about the Cadillac tax.
I did.
I'm just wondering if you might consider, you know, a more descriptive term. I know we refer to it as the Cadillac tax, but.
Absolutely.
That might be a little bit confusing to folks who think that's what we're driving, and that's what we have.
Thank you. Yeah, this is, that's, I apologize. That's related to the Affordable Care Act, and it would relate to if our plan was considered a Cadillac plan, meaning that it was more costly to operate our plan than what was set by federal guidelines.
Yeah, I'm, I am aware of what it is and why it is and why it's been moved, but just, I'm just wondering if you might consider.
Absolutely.
The term itself.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good point. Mr. Pfeiffer?
So I want to go back to that Fox property. You made a comment. So are we not using that as consideration of the future of a hospitality location possibly for weddings? I know that was a talk at one point, but you kind of hinted that we're going to scrape it and probably leave it alone then.
That structure was, would have had to been scraped anyway.
Yeah, but I don't want to give up on the property for other uses if we were to build something. It sounded like we're not looking at any hope of building. Are we just giving it back to the, to nature?
To the nature, to the, to the nature center master plan.
To the nature, to the, to the Nature Center master plan. I, when we, when you look back at the, at the study that was done for hospitality facilities, that was actually a lower-rated location at the Majestic View Nature Center. So I, I, I do not believe that would be something that would be under consideration for, for a hospitality.
For a large hospitality. Because I know, I know at one point, we, we had a lot of weddings going through the Arvada Center, and that was a discussion of maybe that would have been an appropriate location for the hospitality for weddings, because of the view and the front range and so forth. So that's just not on there anymore?
It's just a lower priority.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, now to the next page. These are items that we've identified through the budget process, or again, were items that came from last year's budget process, that we have not put funding towards. Again, if we end up with additional one-time funds, these will be presented to city council. What you will notice on here is JPPA funding. We have had a conversation around if that road is going to move forward, and if there is going to be an RFP process, that there may need to be an additional contribution from each of the members, the city, Broomfield, Jefferson County? Did I get that right?
Right.
And so, you will notice that's quite a large number. The other two items you'll see on here that are quite large are related to Lake Arbor Park. So that was one of the items that was presented to city council way back in March, that could have, a possible use around the bond, and city council directed us to put it on this list, but to remove it from the bond consideration. Other items you will see should be somewhat familiar, the security phase two, a match for the Tennyson grant, so you will know that we have received the Tennyson grant, and so this is an item that we will need to fund. We just haven't identified the funding yet, but we're well aware that we need this. And then finally, you will notice some discussion around increasing the Health and Human Services Funds. This request is a $75,000 per year request, and will be included, again, for consideration, assuming we have additional one-time funds.
I guess I have a little confusion here. You've got, you say these are all committed, and yet they're pending.
These ones are, I apologize for the, for the mislabel there on the committed side. That should say pending.
Okay.
The previous one are committed, this one are just pending. I apologize for that.
You're just betting on the come.
Uh, I would not bet on this one. There's some items in there that I do feel that we would need to look at, but I do not think that we will have $9 million of additional one-time funding this year. I do not feel.
Oh, I was hoping that you had a little, yeah, preview of surprise yet to come.
Uh, no. Sales tax, sales tax is running where we expected it to be. We will probably have some additional revenues around buildings. Auto use is up a little bit, but we're certainly not feeling like it's going to be like it has been in past years. And as far as savings go on the expenditure side, we probably will have some savings, but you're probably talking more like a million dollars or a million and a half, not necessarily nine. So.
Very good. Mr. Pfeifer?
I have another question around operations of transportation. So I know we put a lot of money towards kind of, I think, the milling, the repair of the roads, but where do we put money for operational improvements, which could be like light performance, you know, getting, getting traffic through? Because I think most people complain is about sitting in traffic. I think I'd, I'd rather not sit in traffic and deal with maybe a road that's not perfect, but is, where do we put that? Where's that money coming in? Have we put more investment into improving the operation of our roadways?
So, for example, are you talking about signal timing?
Well, it could be signal timing, adaptive signaling, or even analytics, or, you know, anything to help us push, you know, the, get the vehicles through, because you, we're only going to have so much, so much width in the street, right? What can we do operationally to improve the throughput of that width? Are we investing in any, anything to help with that?
Some of that was, was incorporated in the additional position we put in.
The, the traffic technician?
Yeah.
Correct.
Traffic technician.
I saw that.
Yeah, yeah, so some of it's there. Some of it is in, you know, our investment in infrastructure around traffic signal replacement, uninterruptible power sources.
Yeah.
For keeping the lights going in the event of a, of a, of a blackout or a power loss event. And then, you know, also the ongoing efforts we have with Dr. Cog and others around signal timing studies in order to improve corridors. So I, that's probably where I would say most of our efforts focused on.
Mayor, we thought of going, and I'll bring Dot into this conversation, it's an easy way to make a smart city, is getting information on how our roads are performing and get them into the hands of somebody to make decisions if they should ride mass transit today, can they drive, should they carpool? I mean, are we looking at getting anything where people make decisions before they get into a single car and congest our roads more?
Well, I think, I think some of that could be captured in our fiber master plan work, and, and getting, you know, we've laid the conduit, as, as Brian talked about, we have the 22 miles of conduit now, and I think it's a question of getting fiber to traffic signals in other locations around the city that could help us with that smart data, and maybe look at some applications that would enable us to, you know, to provide that kind of information.
I think if you bring that intelligence into the citizens, they, you know, may help with some of our congestion, but that's an easy way to get into smart cities, at least the first step into it. I mean, there's so much more we can do with, with communication and engagement, and I think right now, the more information we can engage our citizens on our traffic issues through apps, or, you know, real-time data, data that they can look at on our website, or whatever that may be, I think there should be some investment in that, because I think that would illustrate why we're going for a bond, and why we need to address certain things, and, you know, giving that, that information to the citizen makes it very powerful. So, I hope somewhere in here, over the next 10 years, we have some investment in this, at least, you know, somewhere in there. I mean, Dot, do you want to add anything?
Well, Ms. Miller's got her light on.
Oh, she does? I'm sorry. She's shaking her head at me, so I thought.
Absolutely. I will, I will wait until you're finished. Yes, I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Pfeifer that we should put smart city and intelligence in the budget somewhere, for sure. I have two questions.
Okay.
One, in the general fund expenditures under street maintenance, you said we were six million short of where we need to be. Do you have any thoughts on how we can get there? Because it's six million now, but five years from now, it's going to be a lot more than that.
Yeah, absolutely. So one of the things that we're working on is this fall, we will commission another PCI study that will help identify the money that we've been able to put into it so far, and how far that went, to really understand, is it six million, is it eight million? By changing the way that we're applying the resurfacing to the roads, did we bend that curve maybe a little bit, now it's four million? Certainly, this is a topic of discussion. One of the items that Mr. Devon has made clear to us is as we move each, through each one of these cycles, that we figure out a way to continually add to that number, whether it's through growth in sales tax, or cutbacks in other areas, we certainly understand that we need to get there. I think eventually, it probably is going to require an additional conversation around whether we see some sort of an increase on a tax basis.
Thank you. My second question has to do with golf.
Okay.
And the budget for the golf, and the big negative number every single year for six years in a row, equals $15.2 million.
It's not a, that's not a cumulative number, that's just a running number, and so that's just the amount that they're under each year. And so, really, if I could give the golf fund $3 million one time, they would not have an issue in any year. And realistically, since they meet their fund balance in the last year, if they just increase a few hundred thousand dollars each year, they'll be okay. So those aren't annual, as you see across the bottom, that's just a cumulative number. Does that help?
It does, it's just a big negative number.
It is a big negative number.
Starting in 2018, and I just.
You are correct.
That gives me heartburn to approve a budget with a big negative number.
Well, and, and Councilmember Miller, I commend you for having heartburn, and it is something that is concerning to us as well. In fact, I think as we look at this, at this golf 10-year plan, you know, it begs the question, what can we do to correct that, that trend? What other measures might we have to take? And, and, you know, we, we need to, we need to have some tough conversations around, around the operation of the golf fund. Some of this was, you know, frankly, brought on by the fact that we made the commitment to fund the, the bonds for the golf course clubhouse out of the, the Golf Course Enterprise Fund, but obviously, that was something that we felt we should do, because we felt the enterprise fund should pay for it, not have it paid for by the general fund. But it could spark a conversation about, you know, do we need to change some aspects of how we currently operate in order to erase that deficit? So some tough conversations, I think, are ahead on this, in this regard.
I don't see any other lights on. Anything unique from us at this point, Mr. Devon?
We will, our plan is to get, and I'm, I'm sorry, I was out for a little bit, so I don't know if Mr. Archer covered this or not, but we plan to provide the city council with the proposed 2019-2020 budget approximately first week in September.
Correct.
And.
Yeah, he went through the schedule with this.
Okay, all right, great. And then, one of the things we're adding this year, and he probably already talked about this, but I think it bears repeating, the departments will be making presentations to all of you at workshops on the 24th of, of September and the 8th. I'll describe what those, in a little bit more detail in my budget letter, what those presentations will focus on, but we wanted to give the city council an opportunity to talk with each of the department heads, and, and have the department heads present issues that they're facing, areas where they had to increase expenditures, or where we're recommending to increase expenditures based on operational issues or, or challenges that they're facing, and then share some, some pertinent performance measures that help explain some of the initiatives that were taken, and give the council an opportunity to ask department heads questions and, and so forth. We're hoping to keep it pretty high-level, pretty strategic. You know, for example, we wouldn't want to focus on the specifications for, you know, putting in a sign or something like that, but, but we want to give you an opportunity to ask any questions you have, you know, specific to an operational area.
Great. Very good. That concludes our workshop.
Thank you.
Since this was really not going to be a full business meeting, but we do still have an opportunity for public comment, is there any other public comment for us tonight? Seeing none, I'll close that. Any reports from city council? Mr. Pfeifer?
Yeah, we had this last weekend, had the annual retreat at the Denver Regional Council of Governments up in Keystone, and we discussed several items, but one that was most interesting, and I've asked Mr. Devon if he could look into it for a workshop for us, is with the state's demographer, demographic?
Demographer.
Demographer, there we go. I was trying to think of a long word in my head, it sounded out. Because she, you know, she always does a great job, and I think we've all seen her, but what was interesting for, I think that, how her story is now, I think we could all benefit. It basically, they've put some more analysis around who's moving here, and the trending of households and zoning was kind of an interesting. They're showing a trend of very young, you know, the baby boomer, or not the millennials, or the Y generation has, is very interested in downtown Denver and living apartments, and is great, but they're seeing a huge trend of them moving to the, the burbs and doing the burb thing, which is single-family homes, and that, what was interesting about it that I captured was apartments are more interesting in the, in the urban center than they are in the out, with the, with the next generation of kids. So, it was something that was, caught my eye, and I thought it might be a good idea to, just for us to get some eyes out on a 10, 20-year trend that the state is seeing with the.
I think it would be useful to have that prior to our annual retreat ourselves, so that gives us some things to think about as we start doing our next round of planning for the future. So I, I think that's a great idea. Ms. Ford?
Well, I'm always going to say something about the Arvada Center if I can, and I had the good fortune of seeing the last concert, summers, of the summer series. It was the Colorado Ballet, and it was a very full concert, and it was a great, it was a great performance, so I was real pleased about that.
Great. Yeah, Elf will be one of the great, I, I can't wait for Mamma Mia. I, I just got to tell you, I, I sing that way too often, so. Okay, and, and I'm hoping I can get an appropriate outfit for, that would sort of carry forward the theme of Baba Mia.
I, I have no doubt you will, and I was actually thinking of Mamma Mia for Mr. Archer for potential, you know, presentation in the future of the finances.
Very good. Okay, before we go further down that rabbit hole, Mr. Devon, anything else you've got?
No.
That's wise. Mr. Daley? That's even wiser. We are adjourned.